Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Tuesday, May 27, 2008. This evening, City Council is going to be meeting in two committee meetings. First Finance and Personnel, and then Environmental Services Committee, or the Environment Committee, I should say. And immediately following that, City Council will be in special session, and I will remind both those watching and our new council members that a special session is a limited agenda. It does not include all the things that our regular session does. Beginning with Finance and Personnel, Jim Sands.
Mr. President, all of us, all council members should have in their agenda a copy of a proposed ordinance 6908, an appropriation ordinance that we'd like to discuss this evening, introduce, and probably ask for suspension of the rules because there are some timed payments in here that we're not going to meet again. This is, has several steps in it, I think they're all fairly clear. I'm going to ask maybe the auditor to go over ordinance 6908 with us. Section 1, $4,000 to East State Street Debt Fund. Go from there, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, what we've done in this one is, this is another one of those things that got missed in the budget. And also part of this is because in the past, we appropriated differently than we do now. What we need is the money to pay our EPA litigation note. To do the 31st, we have to pay it on Friday, the 30th. You already passed the ordinance from our bond council saying that was okay to do that. But we don't have that money appropriated. What we need to do is appropriate the full amount, and then we reborrow what we want to reborrow. So what happened was, $70,000 had actually been appropriated in the interest, but we need to appropriate the full amount, so we need an additional $290,000. And then we're actually going to pay down $80,000 rather than the $70,000 we thought we might pay down anyway. We also have issue fees that we pay our bond council for preparing those ordinances that you pass. And so we need that $4,000 appropriated for that. That goes into another account line. So that is the $4,000 and the $290,000. Then, excuse me, we have, which as I said, you've already, you know, this is our, I don't know, 11th renewal of that note, and just every year, we pay down what we can. And so it's kind of business as usual, you know. It's nothing new that council hasn't done, or the city hasn't been doing. We paid $80,000 last year. So that will bring us down to $275,000 owed. We were at $355,000, $435,000 the year before, so. Okay, also the TIF fund, which is fairly new to the city and gets a little bit complicated. That is similar to FEMA in that we have a TIF fund required by law. When we get that money, it goes into the TIF fund. We have two accounts in there. One is our share of the TIF money, and the other is the school share that we have to pay out. That money goes into the TIF fund, and we pay the school. And we have a timeframe where we need to pay the school, so we need that money appropriated. That would be the $117,712. Then, the $256,000 or so needs to be appropriated, and then transferred to East State Street Debt, which is what we use that TIF money for, is to pay on our East State Street Debt Fund, which is also coming up. So there's an appropriation, an inter-fund transfer, and another appropriation in the debt fund for that amount. Anybody have any questions about that?
Two different debt funds that we're dealing with tonight. One is EPA litigation, and the other is East State Street Debt. Each are handled somewhat differently.
Right. But they're both, one is due Friday, one is coming up in June, so they do need to be.
One of the questions I had, auditor had, was there's a line in here, about $30,000 to the water fund for Mary Street waterline repair valves and fire hydrant. Mary Street is one of the streets that's being covered with our.
CD.
CDBG. CDBG funds this year, and the street and water department has suggested that if we're going to be working on the street, we should also look at the pipes under the street. And so that got included in here, but the mayor just asked me about some further stuff. So do we want to, because this is CDBG as opposed to other.
Regular funds.
Okay, well.
Let's just cover this one, I guess.
Because the CDBG funds will be kicking in, and this project will be starting soon. So we're going to include this, and we'll, in a moment, close this discussion and talk about what the mayor wants to talk about. Does everybody kind of understand what we're asking for here? The suspension is because it's the EPA debt that is, needs to be paid by the end of the month?
Kathy? It's a bond, right?
I'm sorry.
Is it the EPA?
Why the suspension?
Yes, it's due, yes, it's due Friday.
It's due the 30th of May, so the other things are timely also, but this has a time limit on it. Okay, so that, that's ordinance 6908. And the mayor has a couple other things that he just shared with me, want to talk about.
Yes, essentially, I wanted to bring up two items. One, staying with the paving motif, is that if you remember, you're just, you're in the process of appropriating money and putting out a, we just put out the, opened the bids for the street pavement for the year. One of the conversations at the staffing meeting, staff meeting level was, it'd be nice to start looking at the pipes underneath before we pave over it. So what you have on one page, the handout I gave you, has one side with the list of the streets that we've decided to pave. The other side is a short list generated by Nick Carr and Nick Joseph on some of the high water breakage areas, parts that need to be replaced. This list that he generated is not prioritized. I told him to put it, just look at it in terms of bite-sized pieces. I say that because originally, the bite-sized pieces, he's talking about a quarter million pieces, and I said, gotta make it smaller than that. The concept there is that we've discussed before, I know Nancy has, the idea of trying to do a maintenance program. It'd be nice to be able to, you know, fix the pipe before you put the pavement on. So I'm not really asking for a, you know, an ordinance immediately on that, because I want to get, I want to see what kind of priority, prioritized list that Nick Carr will generate. I know he's out for most of the week, just so we can get a bit of handle on which ones go first. Some are very small, some are larger, as you see. So that's where it stands. Go ahead, sorry.
One of the things we've talked about, when we've talked about maintenance, is looking at INI issues. And would this be water and sewer, and we would be solving some of those and kind of extending the life of the plant also?
This is just water. If we want to look at sewer, I'll generate a list of that as well. I can do that.
I know, we've had areas where there've been a lot of breaks, we've also had areas where there's a lot of infiltration into the sanitary sewer system. I don't know if those are happening in the same places or not.
Looking at the list, I'm willing to bet some of them overlap a little bit, but I couldn't tell you which ones. In general, I know the south side has the biggest problem, I've been told. So that Longview one for $70,000, and that's actually the length of the repair, is what we're looking at. Other areas, I'd have to find out. I can ask. The reason why I didn't put that on list is because I know our sewer fund is not as robust as the water fund, but I can check on that. And most time, when water goes, it usually damages the street versus sewer does not. But I'll look, I can, I can get Nick to generate a small, bite-sized pieces of sewer INI problems. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, who knows, I mean, I don't know what we can afford to do with this, but I like the idea of looking at these things in a little more integrated way and trying to save money in the long run.
Okay. And as I say, there's no guarantee we'll be able to do all of them, but the idea is just to get, start getting a handle on some of them. Any other questions, I mean?
Just a comment on Longview Heights. As a resident out there, I think about four times in the last year, and maybe Debbie can help me out on this, we've had major breaks, one fairly recently, and every time it happens, the whole Longview Heights water tower is totally drained, which leaves us at a loss for fire protection and all the other problems. And Chris, how long has it lasted? Most of the times, usually it'll.
At least a day.
Close to a day, yeah. And so that's a pretty hefty price tag I see associated with it. And I do notice that it seems to be the whole length of everything we're paving, is what Nick is suggesting here, is that.
Pretty much. I need to go back and make sure we're talking about the same portions of the streets. Again, that means coordination between Andy Stone and Nick. But you look at that $70,000, and that's quite a length of it. Realize a lot of those breaks have to do with the system that's up there in terms of the pumping. The way I understand it, if the pump is in certain phase of cycling, the water up the hill or down the hill, and the electricity cuts off, it just slams into the pipe and just pops a hole in it. So that's one of the reasons why you have, this is the thing with lift stations and certain designs, from what I understand. Again, I'm not the engineer guy who looks at this. I just know that, talking to the guys, they say, well, when it punches a hole in it, that's because it's slammed into it, and the south side has got that problem.
Well, as a south side resident, I'll tell you, it can be a problem with a lot of angry neighbors coming to talk to us about it, but, you know, there's a lot of problems in the city.
Yeah. Well, again, the idea is to start looking at it, you know, the conversation was, it's a staff meeting, was, gee, it'd be nice to check and see what's under the street before we pave it over and have to dig it back up again. And this is the same thing with Mary and Granville, and this is the same thing with other streets that we can look at.
That's a good conversation to have, right?
I think so, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now, another item.
Okay. And the other item is, basically, it's a, an email from, or a letter from Chief Rick Mayor, mostly wanting some funds appropriated for new uniforms, for the new officers. We have about, we've added two officers in the past two months, we've got three more in the last phase of interviews, and they should be coming online. Looking at his budget, line budget, he's basically asking for a good amount, a good chunk of money for that. Also, of course, getting new vests for the reserve officers as well. The conversation I had with Jim and Kathy a while back was, we can take it out of some of the other line items within the police budget, but rather than starve that, I think we should appropriate new money for this, just because we have new officers coming on. But it's your choice. I don't expect you to act on it immediately, but I'd like to see that happen, and I'm just bringing it up.
Because these officers probably won't be coming online till the end of summer?
No, I, hopefully, they're going to be coming on in the next month or something.
Oh, really?
Yeah, month and a half, maybe. I don't know until they tell me to swear them in, to tell you the truth, but I know that they're in the last phase of interviews. So, and this is like the second interview, just before they start, you know, doing all the other orientations.
So the number you're talking about is that bottom line $15,000?
14,9, yes. Okay. And the back page, of course, gives you a price list of what the, one of the last officers in 2006 cost in terms of all the equipment. And I think having discussions with the auditor today is, again, to make everybody aware that, and she has brought it before, that uniforms and part of these, part of the clothes requirements and uniform requirements for the city employees is taxable, and will have to be eventually assessed. Probably not this month, probably sometimes this year, at least from her last training that she had, right?
Things like a protective vest would not be taxable, are they? No, you're really just talking clothing that can be worn.
On both occasions.
On both occasions, yeah.
Adapted to street wear is what the IRS calls it, which includes more than you might think, just because, like, the street crew has the really bright neon t-shirts, those are considered taxable, they're adapted to street wear. People can wear those to the mall or the grocery store.
Or some fish concert or something.
They really want to tax everything, is what comes out of it. But no, the police department probably has the most items that would not be taxable.
Okay. So, and the reason why I bring it up is because I think we want to pull something like this together next, if not the next meeting, maybe the next one after that. Let's see, other items, do you have anything else? Find your personnel.
Well, do we want to talk about the cat video? Just a little discussion to throw out there. For some time now, we've been talking about taking the revenue from estate taxes and putting it in the cap fund. And we recently got a payment, we get that twice a year, like we do property taxes. And when I started looking at it, then I realized there might be some issues with that, so I called the state auditor. For one thing, when we get that money, the auditor fees from the county are automatically taken out, but we still have to show that as an expense, revenue and expense in our records. We cannot do that in the cap fund, so that money will still have to come out of the general fund. Also, there are more restrictions on what we can do with that money once we put it in the cap fund. So Mayor and I had a discussion today about how much. We've gotten quite a bit this year, but you never know from one year to the next how much you're going to get. And we had appropriated $100,000, assuming we would probably get that, in revenue in the general fund. I'm a little bit worried about putting all of the money, at least this year, into the cap fund, and, you know, maybe having a shortfall in the general fund because of that. The other thing is, there's the general cap lines, the 580, 580, that we put money into or appropriate, and then it can be used in other funds as needed. We also have specific cap 580 account lines, like 580208, which would be the fire department cap line. Once we appropriate it into that line, you know, it really needs to be used, it can only be used there, unless we can show that there's no longer a need for what we want it for, and then we have to exhaust the other capital account lines before we can move it out, and special revenue funds. So while the general fund monies can be more easily spent and moved to other funds, it doesn't work the other way with the other funds. So once we put it in the cap fund, we have to show, show why, if we want to move it back out and put it in the general fund. So we discussed maybe putting some still in the general fund, putting some in the cap fund. I also have assigned a project number at the mayor's request for the new ladder truck, so that once that money is put into a vehicle line, if it has a project number attached, it can only be used for that, which I assume is what council wants, as we're trying to save up for that very large purchase. You know, we can't do that in one year. And, you know, I'm just trying to protect the money without leaving other funds short.
So.
I don't remember that we have ever passed, we've discussed this, but we have not had an ordinance setting it up this way, have we not?
No, well, we don't have to. We can apply that revenue, that's the thing. We don't have to have an ordinance for us to, you know, put that money into that revenue account.
We don't have to?
Well, there's, you don't have to put an ordinance, there could be a policy within ours, what we do and how we divide it up. That's really why we're coming and discussing this. I think you're saying this half year, how much did we generate, get in from estate tax?
Well, the total was right around $300,000, and then with the auditor's fees, it's either $276 or $286, I kind of forget. It's about $280,000 we've just got.
Yeah, and we, of course, have, you know, your estimated revenue for the year is about $100,000. Realize about 2% is what we're getting out of income tax for capital improvements. The discussion we ended up with was the idea of maybe putting like two-thirds into the cap and one-third out for operating costs, in case we run into a budget crunch with the fuel. Realize you have an appropriation that's working its way through right now, pulling $100,000 out of cap for a ladder truck, which is why I wanted that project number put in place, so it can roll over year to year, and we don't, we don't starve that one, or take it from there. So, go ahead. I think Debbie had a question, I don't know.
Well, if I could just finish my thought first.
I do have a paper, $275,895 is what we actually got.
Okay.
Okay, the only thing I would say, I remember council setting policy on how we determine interest-to-income is divided between funds. That was an ordinance that set the policy. When you're saying you don't need an ordinance, how is the policy set? That, I can't believe that the administration and the auditor together is going to do this without councils.
Okay, you're asking, so you want to appropriate, take that money and appropriate to?
Well, I'm not too sure that we want to make any change, I'm not too sure that we want it to go, you know, into cap totally. We haven't done it, there's been a discussion, but this is a policy decision, and that's council's prerogative, is what I'm saying.
Okay, you're asking whether, you're asking whether it needs, it needs to be done, or it should be?
But you said it doesn't take an ordinance. I would argue that point.
Okay, I understand.
Okay. Because it is a policy-setting decision on how the fund would come in and what account it goes to.
I'll call the state auditor back, but he certainly didn't bring that up when I talked to him. We don't have a policy for all of the revenue the city brings in, and there is flexibility there where we want to put money. Halloween donations can go, you know, and it's not necessarily done by ordinance.
But Kathy, what I would say is, if we are going to determine that that would go to the ladder truck, and I'm not saying that's a good thing or a bad thing, I'd say that that is a policy decision that only council should make.
Okay, yeah.
And I would argue that.
Okay. What you're seeing is it ends up in the 101 revenue line as estate tax. If you look at our notes, I think it says cap fund in parentheses, and I think that's because it reflects the conversation Rick was having with council at the time, saying, you know, the estate tax is variable, we don't want to rely on that for operating funds, so therefore, we should put it into cap.
That's actually, the point that I was going to bring up, just for new council members in particular, is that it came about when we changed the income tax mix, because we were in a budget crunch, when we decided to put a larger percentage into general revenue and reduce the amount of the income tax, the regular city income tax that was going into cap. That was when we had that discussion about what about using estate tax money, because that fluctuates from year to year. You wouldn't want to rely on it for recurring costs like paying a police officer's salary, but we could use it for projects when it's available. So that was kind of historically, I know it was a discussion, I don't know if there was a formal policy adopted, but it was kind of in response to when we had to make that, that change in the income tax mix.
Right, no, there wasn't, and there are actually two things we're talking about here, and I, it's probably my fault that I brought them up at the same time. The decision to put that money into the cap fund is one thing. To earmark it for the ladder truck is another thing. But I was just making that leap, that I thought that was, you know, what council wanted to do. I got the impression that, you know, that that was one of the reasons to put that in the cap fund, is to earmark money for that. But it's really two different things. We can put those estate taxes just in the general cap fund, and then you can decide later if you want to put it in, in a special line and save it for the ladder truck. Those are two different things.
Okay, the discussion I was having with Kathy earlier today is that, once we put it in the cap fund, it's hard to take it out of that to use for operating if we need it.
That's the reason that I would say we probably shouldn't.
Well, I wouldn't say, let's put it all over into the general fund. I think we should, you know, it's actually higher than we expected in terms of revenue, and therefore, we should look at and say, okay, if we're going to, you know, this is again, this is why we want to put it in the cap, because sometimes it'd be higher, sometimes it'd be lower. I would not want to put it all there, because I really am afraid of where our fuel budgets are going to be at the end of the year, and trying to pull it out after, after the fact may be more difficult. On the other hand, to take some of it and say, let's squirrel it away, I have no problem with. And that's why I'm bringing it up, because it looks like it's higher than anticipated, and we should think about what we want to do with this little, this little piece of cheese, or whatever you want to call it. You know, because it is a little over and above, and I know we're trying to save for a ladder truck, I know we have capital needs as well, and this is why we're bringing it up. It's an overall discussion.
Sure.
The other, yeah, we're just throwing it out there, it's not anything we have to decide right now, we can always go ahead. Actually, we need to book it by the end of the month, but.
End of this month?
Yeah, you know, we've deposited the check, and we need to show it in our report somewhere. But it can certainly be moved out of the general fund into the cap fund at any time, much easier than vice versa. I'm just throwing it out there. The other thing I wanted to point out is our unappropriated balance sheet for April has a general fund with about $155,000, or maybe that was March, I don't know.
That was March.
And we have an ordinance going through right now appropriating another $100,000 for NUCO. So, you know, our cap fund is, I mean, our general fund probably could use a little bit of that revenue also, so.
Just making aware, you know, I'm not trying to jump policy on you, just saying there's options we've been thinking about discussing, and where you want to go with it, it's open to more discussion.
Yes, my suggestion would be to go ahead and leave it in the general fund for now, and then you make a decision how much or if you want to transfer some to cap. I don't know what, any big things about that.
I'd like to have that flexibility with it.
I think it's a good idea.
Gives us options with it.
Or split it up, as the man and I discussed, but, you know, I just, this just came up tonight, you can certainly think about it, and there's no hurry. We're not ready to buy the ladder truck, and, you know, we're not going to do anything with that money, I hope, right away. But we, you know, I guess because we have been putting it in the general fund, I just soon leave it there for now.
How, how, how late in the year then could we make that decision if we wanted to move some from the general fund to the capital?
Anytime you want, up till, up to the end of November, you got three, three meetings left, or?
Okay.
Yeah, up to the budget, when the budget gets put together.
Okay.
The idea is you'd have leftover if you need it. You know, realize we're, at one point, I know Alahu was talking about, and another hazardous waste pickup. Realize, of course, at the same time, you see what the rollover contract is, and that's going to come right out of the garbage fund, which means we won't have a lot for a hazardous waste pickup if we're looking at the budget, so, you know, we may need it for something like that. That's a minor, small, that's, you know, that was $15,000 last time or less, but these are things you have to think about, how much flexibility you want to play with, and at the same time, you don't want to squander it, you want to put it someplace that's, you know.
That would be the main thing to keep in mind, is that the unappropriated balance is going to go up, you know, in the general fund, and so not to just look at that and say, ooh, let's, you know, spend it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's actually entirely up to you, but if you want to save for this ladder truck, then that's just something to keep in mind.
And as the auditor points out, we do have an ordinance, not for reading, for reading tonight, but not for voting tonight, appropriating $100,000 to the capital fund specifically for this ladder truck. But we might have an opportunity to put away even more this year. That's the discussion to have later on. We have, this just makes it clear why finance meets all the time, and always has something going on, because it's the, it's the everyday meat and potatoes of what the city does, so we need to talk about it. Thank you all. I think we'll pass on to the Environment Committee now.
Okay. I had a meeting last week, I attended the wellhead protection team meeting with the mayor, and Michael Cooper from the Athens City County Health Department, Nick Carr and Crystal Canard were also there. There is, there was unanimous support for a change in how we address secondary containment systems in the wellhead protection ordinance, I'm sorry, in the actual city code for the wellhead protection plan. Mike Cooper, do you care to tell us a little bit about what this change is and what it means to our water supply here in the city?
Well, several months ago, the wellhead protection team began discussions among ourselves in response to citizen concern for ways we could improve the ordinance, and we looked at several wellhead protection ordinances around the state of Ohio, namely the city of Dayton, the city of Xenia, and St. Clair Township in Green County. And we looked at a number of different issues of how they address certain, certain matters that we felt would be beneficial to the wellhead protection ordinance, and the one we're here to discuss tonight is the issue of secondary containment of hazardous materials and facilities. And what we want to ensure is that when we have hazardous materials in these facilities, that we have, one, spill control and containment plans in place in the event of a catastrophic failure or leakage, and, two, that we have the facilities constructed such that we can contain any spill within the facility without letting it get to the outside environment and affect cleanup within the facility. And we crafted the section that we're going to talk about this evening, based on the other three ordinances that we looked at. And just a couple of points from, from the language here. And just a couple of points from the language here, that the containment systems be constructed or lined with materials that are compatible with the hazardous materials that are stored at the facility. What we're looking for there is that a potentially hazardous material wouldn't degrade the structural integrity of the containment, that they are of sufficient thickness, density, and composition, that they wouldn't be weakened from contact with the regulated substance, free of cracks, joints, gaps, or other imperfections that would allow leakage through the containment. And the big issue that we saw is that, again, the containment system has to be constructed such that it contains the volume of the spill, the potential spill of everything that's in the facility, again, within the structure itself, so effective cleanup can be conducted. We think it's just a good planning, good future planning when we're talking about—we have what are known as nonconforming regulated facilities in the wellhead protection area. These would be facilities that practice what would be considered prohibited activities but were grandfathered in because they were in existence before the ordinance was passed. What we're trying to address here is the potential expansion of these facilities, and we want to make sure that we've got the bases covered, that what we're allowing them to do doesn't put the wellhead protection area at any particular risk. Be happy to field any questions that you all might have concerning that.
Thanks. And just a couple of points before anyone asks any questions, if they have some. One is this is relatively narrow in scope. This is really only going to apply in a few instances that I can imagine coming in the next—coming in the future. Where we put this in the ordinance and how it's stated is that it outlines what's required for secondary containment systems for any nonconforming facility expansion. So it's very narrow in scope. It's not going to affect the businesses that are operating in the wellhead protection area right now. It's not going to change the way that they're operating or change requirements for them. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the other thing, just to emphasize what this will—how much this will improve protection. The way it stands now, as I understand, if there is, say, one 55-gallon drum of regulated substance, and the containment system required right now is required to cover that 55-gallon drum, but if you have 10 or 100 of those, you still only need to cover one of the drums.
Right. The current requirements is that it contain 110% of the largest container at the facility. A good example would be perhaps an oil refinery where you have maybe 500,000-gallon tanks on site. The requirement for their containment would that it contain 110% of one of those tanks. What we are trying to address is a potential catastrophic failure where perhaps all five of them became disabled. And we had a massive spill that our containment just wasn't up to—and just didn't have the capacity to contain it. So that's the direction we're trying to take this.
Are there any questions from council members?
I have two. One is, you said that you did model this on language in other places, the words "compatible with." I didn't know if that's taken from another ordinance—
Yes, it is.
—and that would mean that it would contain the regulated substance.
Right.
That question that you just mentioned about 110% of the total volume, is that in existence somewhere in law in Ohio, or is that kind of significantly extending what's required anywhere else?
It's an expansion of what is required in the other ordinances, yes.
Go ahead.
The only comment I would make is, you know, I think this could be a very beneficial thing for any business that is down there and has to conform, because you don't need to look any further than this body to realize that the EPA litigation fee that all the citizens of Athens are being charged on their water bill every month is an outgrowth of polluting the wellhead area. I mean, that is something that the city has—we were sued by the EPA for $1.8 million. So I think a very good argument could be made that this is the type of thing that could protect a business down there to know what they need to do so they don't find themselves in the same kind of position that the city has found itself in. And that lawsuit has now gone on for the 18 years that I have been coming to this room, and we're not done yet.
If I could make one more point, and I think this is very important. Once the water supply becomes contaminated, it is extremely expensive and, in some cases, may be impossible to bring it back. So I think that the planning aspect of this is very important and something we should consider.
And also, it was brought to my attention earlier—I didn't know this before—but that is the only water source for the city of Athens at this point in time.
Right. We have three wellfields: the Armadish Wellfield, the West State Street Wellfield, and the hospital. So we want to be very careful about any kind of new construction or facility expansion in any of those areas. Yes, Jim?
You just mentioned a thought that I'd had. New construction, anything new in the wellhead protection area, would not be allowed to have these chemicals stored.
Right. A good example would be a gas station with underground storage tanks. That, by ordinance, is a prohibited activity. We have some in the wellhead protection area. They are, again, what are considered nonconforming regulated facilities because they were in existence before the ordinance was passed. However, there would be no new ones constructed—
Okay.
—the way the ordinance is currently worded.
Thank you. All right, thank you. I think at this point, I would—I will possibly be bringing this up for a vote under suspension at our next meeting. There's a sense of urgency, I think, in making sure that if there are any facilities in the wellhead protection area, that we guarantee that there will be the proper containment systems in place. So, make them up at our meeting Monday. I guess I have a couple other things here.
Thought you were done.
Bear with me. So, the diesel emissions reduction grant, I have been in communication with Clean Fuels Ohio. Their plan was to pull together a number of applications for this, and they did not get as much interest as they were anticipating. I may have an opportunity to meet with them again later this week or early next week, so if they can find a certain—there's a dollar amount to the grant application, so if they can find another two or three interested parties, then we may move ahead with that. But that's possibly not going to happen. It depends on how much interest they can generate for this. The next item is miscellaneous, and I do have a miscellaneous item here. I have been meeting for some time with Gary Houser, who is a co-founder of the Eco Health University here, regarding energy in the city of Athens. There is—in a few states, in Athens, Ohio was one of them, local communities have the right to aggregate their energy purchases for gas and electricity. And there's a procedure that we would have to go through, and a large number of steps, but there are a number of benefits that we could get from those. One would be reduced cost for the fuels, for natural gas or for electricity, because we would be buying them bulk as a city, pulling all of our purchasing power together. And also, it could give us the power to say where our electricity is coming from. If we were to form a committee or—and develop a plan and set goals for how much of our electricity we want to come from renewable sources over the next five to 10 years and set long-term goals for those, this would give us the power to really do that and to put it in our own hands, and we would have a huge amount of control over that. And one of the things that comes to mind when I'm looking at these things is the potential that we have in this community for this type of project. And Jennifer Simon was here a couple weeks ago, talking about one sector of economic development being renewable technologies, green energy. And what better way to attract businesses in that field than to have a city that's really taking a leadership role in those issues? I would like, at this point, to start a subcommittee to look into this further. This type of aggregation system is set up for energy purchases in a large part of northeast Ohio, and they were the first ones in the state to really get this going. But I would like to start a subcommittee of the environment committee in order to pull together the appropriate parties. Hopefully, we can get business, people interested, the residents, of course, represented, and then perhaps also get the university to come into this.
Why would we need a subcommittee? Why not just the energy or the environmental committee?
We could. I think that the scope of this is very specific and will require a huge amount of work outside of the normal council committee meetings.
You've got a sunshine consideration.
Of course, yeah. And I would certainly—the meetings will certainly be within that, but it would be a chance for a smaller group to get together, a smaller group of council members, and then these other interested parties from the community.
Smaller than three?
Potentially. It depends on the interest of the council members. Did you have a question, David?
Yeah. I guess, when I got an email from Gary about this and wasn't entirely sure, when you talk about energy aggregation, are you talking about, like, creating Muni Light in Cleveland or something? I mean, is it a public utility, essentially? That—I just don't understand exactly what you're talking about.
No, it isn't. Do you have something?
Part of it is actually what you're doing is you're doing an aggregation of buying power, distribution. You contract as a city or as a large unit to buy distribution in terms of gas. I was approached sometime a couple months ago about this, the city wants to do it. To do it citywide, actually, it would have to go on the ballot to get the citizens involved themselves. They don't have to buy into it, but anybody who's running, like, say, from Columbia Gas could actually say, I wanted to get my gas from some other place. I believe Marietta has some kind of aggregate buying for their energy. I think it's electricity, but maybe—I forget, because I've seen it on their website. Anybody else—if you remember, a couple years ago, you had a choice of who you wanted to buy your gas, natural gas, from. Those people actually would be tied into their contract, unless, of course, it's up for renewal. But that's really what you're looking at, is we could negotiate with other distributors of gas. And I'm just thinking of gas, because that's the one I was approached with. So it's not really becoming our own power system, but it's rather who we want to buy the gas from. It all goes through the same infrastructure. There's a certain breakdown. I could give you more information. I don't have it with me. I wasn't—this was on miscellaneous. But there's been some discussion of this before. At least, when I was on council, I was approached one time. And to tell you the truth, I didn't track it. I've been approached again, saying, does the city want to get involved in that? And that's something to think about. In terms of where you buy your gas, depends on what kind of stipulations you put on it. Where you buy your energy depends on what kind of conditions. Some might be lower than market value, what you're getting now. Some may be higher, depending on what stipulations and what conditions you want for green versus non-green.
And so, I mean, it would not be creating a utility like that. This would be using the same—using the AEP as our electricity carrier, just purchasing the energy from other entities.
A broker, so to speak.
Yeah. And the Chamber of Commerce in Athens actually already does this with gas for businesses in Athens. So it's not—it's something that is commonly done. Although I envision with electricity, we could do a lot more with it than is usually done. But there will be more coming out about that in the future. As we learn more, including myself. And this is—there are no hard details on this, because it's still in the concept stage very much. Do we have any more questions on that issue? Okay, I'm finished up with the environment committee.
On to the special session. We do have a quorum with six of seven members in attendance. Ordinances for third reading. Oh 5608, an ordinance amending ordinance oh 3607, authorizing a contract to upgrade the city's telephone and computer networking systems, project number 228, and amending the 2008 appropriation ordinance. This was introduced by council member Bane. Member Bane is not in attendance tonight. Member Sands, I understand you will.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 5608.
Second.
This ordinance does amend a prior ordinance that we have passed to authorize an upgrade of the city's telephone and computer networking systems, which includes building a new tower on Current Drive, expanding an existing tower on Roosevelt, and some other additional actions. This, I understand, amendment is to actually provide money for communications equipment for the Athens Police Department. Their current communications that are used by the communications officers will not be compatible with this system. We don't go with this.
Motion and a second for adoption of ordinance 5608. Is there further discussion? All in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 5708 is an ordinance granting a variance from the Athens City subdivision regulations to the Citizens Bank of Logan for property located outside the corporate limits but within the three-mile jurisdiction to allow a minor lot split. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, I move adoption of oh 5708.
Second.
You may recall that this variance is based on lot size, that the lots are smaller than the required size in this area because of lack of curb and gutter there. But this is an area where there were two existing lots, but the existing structures were built across the lot line. So this is actually just changing the lot split so that the line is in the other direction so that each structure is on its own separate lot.
Motion and a second. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 5708?
Aye.
Opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 6008, an ordinance amending the 2008 appropriation ordinance and authorizing inner fund transfers. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 6008.
Second.
This ordinance ultimately allows the auditor to transfer some funds from the unappropriate balance to the enhancement and tourism funds, and from that to the general fund for covering the cost of computer leasing, leasing some computers for the code office, buying some software for the code office to use. Currently, they have—they work with some systems that they've kind of cobbled together. This will be specifically for code offices, and also some additional website software for the city's website.
Is there further discussion on ordinance 6008? Mayor Wild.
Okay. First of all, I want to apologize. I thought this was on second reading. We'd have to suspend it, so I—obviously, I'm glad we're on the third reading.
I've written "suspend" next to it, getting ready to do it, yeah.
We all thought that, but I'm glad—
The mayor and I were confused.
Yeah.
And again, this is to improve code, ability to track the violations, the rentals. We have a series of databases that are kind of clunky and don't work with each other. So that's the intention. The website, I believe, is mostly for the Athens city code, and eventually just to get an upgrade for what we have. And as I was worried about the timetable, because I think some of these are on a quote basis of, you know, so many days in. So thanks for getting this forward.
Is there further discussion? Yes. Senator Bowles.
I mentioned this before when this came at first reading, and I'm still not sure why we're leasing and purchasing them outright. I mean, whenever we're leasing, we're paying more in the long run, because you're paying interest every single year that you're making those payments.
I think I want to just keep the capital costs low, and I think part of the thing is I want to be able to channel all the computer purchases through one license, so to speak. Part of it has to do with, if we have leasing, we're not really buying the software, per se. We're buying the computer. And—
And again, the other discussion I had with Ron, you had asked at that time, could we get actually a warranty that would extend to five years, and we could, but that'd also be a price as well. So again, it's a marginal way to do it, but I think this is a way to ease ourselves into a replacement computer program over time. And we're starting off very slow, because we're talking about maybe nine to 10 computers over time and then, you know, out of 150 that we need to be cycling through. Okay? Thanks.
Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 6008?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 6108, an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of city funds for certain city-sponsored hosted events, introduced by all members of council who will be speaking.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 6108.
Second.
This ordinance is recommended to us by our auditor, to whom it was recommended by the auditor of state, that we should pass an authorizing ordinance for events where the city of Athens may sponsor, host, or representatives shall attend certain events and where these events occasionally involve the expenditures of funds for payment of facility charges, including meals and incidentals. The auditor of state has concluded that these must be for public purpose, and the authorization shall be sanctioned by the legislative body of that city. That's us. So we're passing an authorizing legislation for such purchases, which occur regularly but not often within the city.
Not a huge amount of money expended. Further discussion on ordinance 61. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. On to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 6208, an ordinance amending ordinance oh 4106, establishing a fee schedule for solid waste and recycling, Title V of the Athens City Code. Ordinance 6308, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a vehicle for the fire department. Ordinance 6408, an ordinance authorizing a variance for a minor lot split on Mulligan Ordinance 6508, an ordinance amending the 2008 appropriation ordinance and authorizing an interfund transfer. Ordinance 6608, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to extend the current contract for solid waste management and ancillary services for one year and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 6708, an ordinance authorizing design engineering of the Grosvenor Street Slip Ordinance 6808, an ordinance amending the ordinance oh 15107, authorize staffing levels and a non-union pay scale for the fiscal year ending December 3108 and declaring an emergency. Now on to ordinances for first reading. Oh 6908, an ordinance amending the 2008 appropriation ordinance and authorizing an interfund transfer. Member Sands.
Mr. President, at this time, I would ask that we consider ordinance 6908 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
We talked about this just a few moments ago in committee. This ordinance has several sections, and one section deals with payment of some, almost $290,000, to our EPA litigation debt fund, and this is -- this payment is actually due the last day of this month, so we won't meet again before that is due. But there are several sections in here. There's -- this authorizes a payment of $4,000 to the East State Street Debt Fund to cover issuing fees for the notes that we will be borrowing money from. Also, $117,712 to our TIF fund to pay the school share of the TIF money that we receive. In setting up our TIF fund, we negotiated with the schools. We, as the city, collect these taxes, and then we pass on the negotiated share to the city twice a year, I believe that happens. Also, the rest of that money that is collected, $256,420, to our TIF fund for transfer later on to the East State Street Debt Fund. We're authorizing $30,000 to the Water Fund for work done on Mary Street, for waterline repair of valves and a fire hydrant. And finally, the one that is precipitating this suspension of the rules is $290,000 to the EPA litigation debt fund to cover the renewal of our note and all associated fees. This will allow us to pay on that note $80,000 this year. I think the auditor said we paid $70,000 last year.
No, we paid $80,000 last year also, but there's $70,000 appropriated.
That's where the $70 came in. Okay. So we're increasing that. And finally, Section 2 authorizes the auditor's office to make that interfund transfer from the TIF Fund 593 to the East State Street Debt Fund so we can continue to pay down that debt.
Motion and a second for suspension of the rules on the ordinance 6908. Further discussion on suspension only. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 6908.
Second.
Or I went on way too far. You said everything I was going to say.
For all the very reasons. Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 6908?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 7008, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 39 Wellhead Protection Plan and declaring an emergency. Member Gosney.
Yeah, we just discussed this in a committee meeting. This will revise the water protection plan in the Athens City Code to ensure that we have adequate containment in case of spills, accidents, or catastrophe involving regulated substances in the wellhead protection area. There's an emergency measure attached to this because I feel that it's essential that we get this through quickly in order to protect the water supply from any potential contaminant of regulated substances that are outlined in the wellhead protection plan.
And we may be voting next morning?
Correct.
For adoption. For anyone out there that's wishing to speak to this, please be here. On to announcements and other business. We have Item 5 on our agenda, is a motion to remove oh 3308 from the table. Who will be making that motion?
Mr. President, I move to remove oh 3308 from the table. The reason for this is that I misspoke last week. I was wrong. And the police department is not requesting a Chevrolet Malibu hybrid. They are requesting a Ford Escape hybrid.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor of removing ordinance 3308 from the table?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been removed from the table and read for the first time.
No.
I'm sorry. It comes off the table.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of oh 3308.
It was tabled at third reading. My apologies.
Yes, it was.
Yes.
Was there a second?
Second.
Thank you. As I said before, I misspoke last week, and the police department wants a Ford Escape hybrid for their unmarked vehicle. I double-checked with Captain Pyle, and it is definitely the Ford Escape hybrid. So I move for adoption.
Motion and second for adoption. Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 3308?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Next item on our agenda is adjournment. Having addressed all items on our agenda, we stand adjourned.